Let's call the April meeting to order. Kathy, just do the roll call.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Here.
Mrs. Tunney?
Here.
Mrs. Ost?
Here.
Mr. Andreessen?
Evening, everybody.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge. Okay, so the first item on the agenda tonight is the student spotlight with our second grade students. Mrs. Charlie, are you going to do the introduction? Oh, Dr. Johnson is going to do that, okay.
I'm saying this month we are highlighting the fabulous work of our second graders. In Module Three of our new ELA resource, our students build their research skills and science knowledge as they work through a study of the world of plants and pollinators. They were guided throughout the module by reading and writing around the essential questions of how do plants grow and survive, how do pollinators help plants grow and survive, how do we get fruits, flowers, and vegetables that we enjoy, and how do we become researchers and share our learning? So in the first unit of their module, the students used multiple informational books to learn about text features, they co-created plant seed fruit and flower anchor charts, they learned how to create scientific drawings, and they learned how to participate in a science talk together as a class, all focused on how plants grow and survive. In Unit Two then, they focused on the study of the role of insect pollinators in helping plants grow and survive. They learned about research skills, they conducted whole group and small group research on different insect pollinators, and then they used their research notes to write an informational essay. In Unit Three, they extended and applied their understanding of pollination and pollinators through a performance task. They had to use their informative writing that they did in Unit Two and other supplemental texts, they prepared an oral presentation, and they created a poster with scientific drawings to share their knowledge about a specific insect pollinator and a plant. Students then had to do their presentation in front of their class. And so we have four of our second grade students here this evening to share their presentations with you. Okay, so this evening, we have Ella, so I didn't give away from Miss Laguna's class. She's going to be presenting on beetles. We have Cora from Miss Nehan's class, she's also going to tell us a little bit about beetles. We have Kira from Miss Street's class, she's going to be presenting on moths. And then we have Connor from Mrs. Street's class, and he's going to be presenting on wasps. So we also have one other student who was supposed to be with us tonight, but he was receiving another award and another prize, so he has to choose, and he went to that. So I'll pass his poster around to you just so we can honor his work as well. And that's Owen from Miss Kating's class. All right, so we're going to go ahead and get started with Kira. Can they have maybe use up a little bit over here? And then I'll put your poster up here. So as you'll see, the students are putting their note cards that they created for their speech up to help guide their presentation. All right, whenever you're ready, nice and loud.
Apples are important to me because I like apple juice. The secret behind the apples is moth. This is how moths help the apple flower. The moth is attracted to, is attracted to the sweet nectar. Moths have hairy bodies, pollen will get out them. It is quietly moving to the, another flower. Here is how moths help help plants, the help plants. The moth pollinates new flowers on the apple seed, forms inside, new apple plants grow.
Right, and then this is her poster that she created. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your poster? No? Okay. All right. Next we have Cora.
Magnolias are important to me because they make the world look beautiful. The secret behind the magnolia is beetles. This is how beetles help the magnolia flower. A beetle is flying to a magnolia to get nectar. The pollen gets on the beetle's wings. The beetle is going to a new magnolia with pollen on its wing. Beetles help magnolias grow and survive.
Is there anything additional you want to share about your poster? Nice job! All right, all right, we've got Ella next.
Mint is important to me because it is, it is used to make mint ice cream. The secret behind mint is beetles. This is how beetles help the mint flower. Beetles are attracted to the flower scent. The beetle accidentally collects pollen at the flower using its hairy body. Beetles finish pollinating by getting pollen and going to flower to flower. Here's how beetles help plants. Beetles pollinate, mint help plants grow and survive. A beetle is flying to a green mint flower to collect nectar. The beetle is now at the mint flower collecting nectar and pollen gets on it. The beetle is now going to a new mint flower to collect more nectar.
All right, and lastly, we have Connor.
Strawberries are important to me because I like strawberry pie. The secret behind the strawberry is wasp. This is how wasps help the strawberry flower. They are attracted to bright flowers, the flower sticks to the wasp's hairy body, the pollen gets on the wasp and flies quickly to the next flower. Here's how wasps help plants. They pollinate flowers, fruits, and veggies.
No? Okay. All right, so we'll pass that around too. And then I have one other poster, Dr. Shaw, would you mind passing Owen's around as well? His poster, he focused on butterflies as the pollinator, so. All right, well, our second graders, this was just a small sampling, but all of the second graders did something very similar. I give them a lot of credit for having not only to get up in front of their classmates, but also all the adults here tonight. So it's a big deal to practice your speaking skills and what a good life skill that will be, that you'll continue to grow. So amazing job, we are super proud of you. We'll give you one more big round of applause. And then I'd also like to give their teachers who are here this evening a round of applause as well because. And then we have a special gift for you, if you want to go over by Mrs. Pike and grab one of those. All right, thank you guys so much.
Okay, we will move on then to next agenda item is public communication. So we will start with Erin Ford.
Good evening, everybody. I am here to give an update on the PTA. We have a lot of exciting events coming up over the next month before school gets out. Just a brief rundown, May 6th through the 10th, we have Teacher Appreciation Week, we are providing lunch for the teachers, we're giving them a special gift, and we're having snack cart. Today was the day for everybody to provide donations. We really appreciate, appreciate everybody's support in helping give our wonderful teachers the recognition and the support that they, they deserve. On May 8th, we have a last play at the Wood Park. Sadly, it's coming down, I think the next week, so we wanted to get together one last time with everybody. We are inviting the community, we're having TCBY provide a sweet treat for everybody. That is from four to six. And then on May 10th, we have a Step Up Night at MJHS for fifth through seventh grade or incoming fifth. We're having a glow party, we're having a DJ concessions by the boosters, laser tag, it should be fun. And then on May 17th, we have the MJH, or the Step Up Night at MIS for incoming third, or for current third and fourth grade. We're going to have games, shaved ice, and games with Mr. McAtee pizza. And then our big event closing out the year is May 23rd. We are having a color run at Main Park in Mokena, and we already have over 400 people register for that, which is amazing. We're going to have an after-party, a DJ. If anybody knows anybody who's interested in sponsoring or wants to be part of, being part of the after-party, they can outreach the PTA. And just kind of summer up, sum up the things that the PTA has been able to support over the last, this month and next month. We have supported eighth grade t-shirts, two Lincoln Way Central scholarships, two MJHS scholarships. We're doing a weather assembly for the fifth grade students. We provided bird feeders for the first grade. So all this couldn't be done without all the fundraising efforts, the dues. We really appreciate everybody supporting the PTA, the school district, helping us find ways to enrich the academic experience for all the kids in the schools. That is our main goal. So next year, we're hoping we can really kind of beef that up and provide more things throughout the year. We're doing the carnival, the magician for the carnival at MIS at the end of the year. And that's it, we appreciate everybody's hard work, and it's been a great year. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Erin Min.
Good evening, I am Erin Min. Among other things, I'm a Mokena resident and parent in the district. The very first major policy and duty listed in the policy 220 is organizing the board after each consolidated election by electing officers. I was there last year when new board members asked about electing officers. Instead of having a real discussion and vote on whose skills, training, experience, as well as willingness to do the work, who would best fit each office? The prior board members appeared to scoff at the idea that anyone would be willing to consider not keeping their current position, or that somebody could be equally, if not more qualified. That apparent resistance to change seems to have only doubled down over time. Are there any sorts of check-ins or one-year evaluations for board members, new and seasoned? That sort of accountability and support? When everyone does their part, it can be a beautiful thing, like a dance. For example, I'm sure that you're all regularly experienced arrival and dismissal times as a parent or employee. When people take their turn in valid directions, they can go smoothly and quickly, without incident, and you're on your merry way. When someone asserts a "me first" or "I don't want to" attitude, or even reluctantly looks down at their phone, it can affect so many other people unnecessarily. The school board and school district also have a beautiful, can also have a beautiful dance or dysfunction. Who can say they are using their skills and training? Is it you? And who can say they are supported by colleagues and admin? Is it you? Who keeps holding the district to its policies? Is it you? And who needs to step it up or allow someone else to? Is it you? Who recognizes and encourages someone else who has the willingness, ability, and experience to fill a title or committee? A recent example within our district of a beautiful dance, Mrs. Charlie communicated to my MIS students about cicadas, supporting parents by giving them good proactive information about what to expect, and conveying a positive attitude on how to handle what might be a new experience for young students. One type of dance that has not been everyone's favorite genre of music has been Kelly or Julie and their persistence to be involved, which includes trying to understand how things function, and if that aligns with the policies and goals of the district, or if there are better ways of doing things. I look forward to a more dynamic future where every board member is engaged and aware of what is going on throughout the district. And I have lyrics. Anybody? It's kind of wobbling.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Next up is Amanda Montgomery.
My name's Amanda Montgomery. Continuing with what I stated last time or the time before that, I'd just like to continue to express my gratitude to my kids' teacher, Ms. Bosco, her aide, Ms. Scary, and now OT, because I think I might have forgot Ms. Trish too. Cadence has been talking about them recently. But, there's a but. I would like to also express my disappointment in the proposed student-teacher ratios for the next school year. Due to time's constraints, I'm only providing the kindergarten student-to-teacher ratios for surrounding districts, many of which are part of the 843 COA. Kindergarten is perhaps the most important group, and is likely many kids' first experiences with a full day of school, and perhaps the most challenging group. The proposed Mokena 159 kindergarten student-to-teacher ratio is 24 to 1. The following ratios are from the Illinois Report Card for 2023 school years. This is for kindergartners again, rounded, full numbers. The state average is 20 to 1, we are 24 to 1. Manhattan 114 is 20 to 1. Summit Hill 161 is 21 to 1. Frankfurt 157C is 20 to 1. New Lennox, 122, perhaps a bit different from us, is 18 to 1. And I think our target should be Butler. Butler 53 is 14 to 1. Many of our kids that are coming in have had smaller class sizes, and in kindergarten, there aren't any aides, at least not past the first week of school. I implore the board and admin to consider a better student-to-teacher ratio, especially since there aren't any aides in the classroom, at least general education classroom. I believe we are failing to meet the needs of our neurotypical students even. And in addition, many of our neurodivergent students in self-contained classrooms could potentially be in the genet setting more often with a lower class size. So please reconsider. These are our kids, this isn't up for semantics or debate. We are not doing as good as our surrounding districts. We can do better.
Thank you, Amanda. Next up is MTA.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have our first grade team, and we have our special education teachers tonight that we're honoring. We'd like to thank them for all the work that they do, and our first grade team will be presenting when they're called up. We'd like to thank the special education teachers, all the work they put into differentiating, adapting, modifying, working with small groups, large groups, working with all kinds of disabilities. They are the heart and soul of the special education department, so we thank them.
Thank you for having us. We are here to talk briefly about what we're doing in first grade for EL. Second grade does pollinators, bees. We're all about the birds. First grade is for the birds. So while they've learned about the specific attributes of those insects, we've learned about the specific attributes of birds, we've become bird experts. We have looked at how birds got hurt in real life and then through human intervention, survived and thrived. We've talked about debates, like real debates in New York City, where birds nest in fancy high-rise apartments in Fifth Avenue, and there's people who want to take the nest down, and people who want to lead the nest up. And first graders have learned to put together arguments for both sides of the debate, and present those arguments in a respectful and informed manner. And now we're moving towards being bird advocates. And thank you, PTA, for helping us. We have a very short, it's super short, mostly pictures of how PTAs helped us. And there's just a quick little, if you want to play that. So we have our kids outside, and you could skip past this because I already said that. And these are just some class shots of us in front of where our classroom windows are. PTA bought us bird feeders, and they're very easily suction cupped onto the windows, we've got bird seed, we put the bird seed in, the kids are just so excited about it, because of course, build it and they will come, the birds are coming. And the kids are handling it so well, they're so excited, they look over and they're like, "Ah, there's a bird." And nobody gets up and freaks out, they know, because we learned, that they can't do that, they're very respectful of the wildlife. And it really just leads itself, especially coming in on Earth Day, of just this whole environmental supportive, loving the earth kind of feeling, and so it's super exciting. And having that is really hands-on. So really, that's all we wanted to talk about, just what we're doing in EL and having a good time. There might be one more shot there. Yeah, that shot there shows the actual feeder with the seed in it, what it looks like. So when the bird lands in, we really do get a great view. And the kids can see the bird close up from a distance. If they rush to the window, the bird will fly away, and they know that. So we've seen a lot of good birds. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up is discussion, Board of Education, Public Engagement, Outreach Opportunities and Possibilities.
So I, because of my background, I am like, I always like to write things out so you don't have to take notes and you can follow along if you want. But a few meetings ago, we had suggested more dialogue on how we can better engage with the community. And Kelly had suggested, we come back and share some ideas. So what I did was put down just a bunch of ideas based off of the Illinois Association of School Boards foundational principles of good governance to connect with the community, having an ongoing two-way conversation. And I did, yeah, here's, I know it's very hard to read, but I'd be happy to, to share it and make some more copies, but here are just some ideas, and I'll just quickly run through them. The IASB suggested having open houses once or twice a year where the, the board members can be kind of paired off into twos and perhaps be given one of the strategic plan issues. And then when folks want to come in and dialogue on that, they can. We already do, I should say, the green ones that I highlighted, I think are something that is, is new, or can be considered as, as more as new, because the ones that aren't highlighted in green, I think we are, we have at least worked to incorporate those already. So parent guardian collaboration, working, and that's kind of tied to the committees, the one after the student voice. So those are, you know, work in with, with parents and collaborate with parents to the best that we can. Another new one is allowing a student voice at the table. Allow for opportunities for students to come to have a seat at the table, give them a chance to grow and experience governance. You know, not an everyday, every meeting thing, they definitely be here sometimes till midnight, I don't think that's a good idea. But the, the next new one is have a better dialogue about correspondence. There's always times when folks write in and have some questions or concerns, either about the, what's coming up for discussion in the meetings, so we can add correspondence to the agenda. That's something that seems to be a best practice across many districts that surround us, so that's another way to do that. And then community business school partnerships, that is another really good one. And the screenshot that I have down below does a really good job of highlighting that, at least giving you some direction of where to go to take a look. They have this partnership application that if somebody wants to come in and try and partner with the school, I mean, it's anything from like the PTA, and, you know, I can't think of many examples off the top of my head, but you, and then there's this great application that they had there. And then continue to strengthen relationships with the local government. So I just wanted to put it down on paper so that folks can give some thought to these, and not saying we need to debate these or discuss them right now, but just give some thought to these as ways that we can help build that two-way communication with the community. community so everyone can at least have, feel heard and have an opportunity. So thanks. Thanks, Lincoln.
Okay, so I just want to remind everybody in the public listening that the purpose of this agenda item is, the board had a workshop with a Illinois Association of School Board representative that is a consultant in a way to the board to teach us best practices and how things, you know, can work better or give us ideas. And in that workshop, one of the things that was suggested by our facilitator, Dr. Nana Lee Williams, I believe is her last name, is that the, our board do more to engage with our community. And so one of the action items we left that workshop with was that we were going to collaborate and discuss opportunities potentially to do that. One of the things, as Julie cited, that the Illinois Association of School Board's foundational principles of effective governance, number two on that is that the board connects with the community. And so with that goal in mind, I appreciate Julie for the organized delivery of her, of her ideas. Mine is not as organized, but I will tell you my ideas. I also felt that having a student voice or having some kind of opportunity for students to speak to the board directly more, to share ideas or experiences or, you know, anything that they suggest, or maybe even it's just a Dropbox or, you know, an opportunity where students can reach out to the board directly and we can hear from them would be great on ideas. And I spoke with the, another consultant, another, the director of the IASB, and asked her what she has seen work well in other districts. I thought that was important to kind of get us off a blank sheet of paper. And I liked a couple of her ideas. One is that school board members adopt a school, and we rotate that. And so that would be bringing a school board member, kind of partnering with maybe a principal or an administrator, and just really kind of getting to know what's going on in that school and just bring it all together for the Board of Education. And then another thing that she said works well is town halls, which I think is similar to what Julie has, is open houses on hers, town halls. She also referred to as coffee and conversations, where board members on a rotating basis, maybe quarterly, are going out and visiting community members where they are, whether it be a coffee house or, you know, a gym, a park district building, something where we are going out into the community and listening to whatever it is they want to tell us. And I think both ideas are really great. And, you know, we're not going to solve everybody's issue, right? I get that. And it could be intimidating to think about having a large group of people showing up and just spouting off all these ideas. I understand that it's intimidating. And I did question Ms. Grant about how do we handle that? Because we don't want to make empty promises. We don't want to make the public think we don't hear them. But what her suggestion is, we kind of just need to figure it out as we go. And the first thing is, let's start, you know? Let's start, and then we'll figure it out and we'll learn what works and we'll learn what doesn't work. And my, so those two things are my ideas. Basically, school boards rotating and adopting a school and getting kind of more in-depth with what's going on. And then the town hall. The final thing I will say that I do think is important for the board to do is come to some kind of understanding and consensus on what we're going to do to respond to the correspondence, to Julie's point, that we are receiving from our community. You know, what standards do we have on how the board is going to come to an agreement on what that messaging is, when that messaging happens? And if the issue is brought to the board and it does warrant a conversation, somehow communicating that to the board, prioritizing it and responding in an appropriate manner. So those are my really three things. Thank you.
Q? Anyone else? Anyone else want to add?
I had two really key ones. All of them are on the Mokeena website. I will pin it on, it's just a joke, a joke. Mokeena website has a very nice notification area where you can select, you choose to do all kinds of fun things during the minutes, electrical commission, board meetings. Is it possible we work with the village to include a little box where if they wanted to know things about the school, we could include some kind of newsletter or some kind of public outreach? I know we normally do that with our funky one details showing the projects we've completed and the health keepers, the state drive. And if people chose to do that, they're already going to this as part of their other services in our community. So I thought that would dovetail into what people are doing. The second part is the village mails out order books with unity news on them. How easy would it be to have a superintendent's court or a district court or some little paragraph with basic information that can be shared along with the website that if people wanted to know more, it's all right there. Doing things like virtual backpack, that kind of stuff, if not, they get this information out as much as people may want it to. But if people wanted to subscribe to this, it would follow along with the other things that are out there. As far as open houses and other things, I know a lot of times seniors may want to know more about our.
All right. Jim? All right, well, I'll piggyback off Jim's thing here. I think that our district does a phenomenal job of communicating to parents. You know, I have a kindergarten or a preschool student where I get two emails from her school every day from the teacher or every week and principal as well. I know our principals send out weekly things. I know teachers are very, communicate as well. So if you're a parent, you're getting all kinds of feedback. You're soliciting things. I've heard people be like, oh, my gosh, are you kidding me? The district sends another survey out? We send surveys out, we get a lot of feedback from parents, right? Fatigue, oh, my gosh, another survey. But to Jim's point, one thing we don't reach out to is non-parents, senior citizens that are in the district, taxpayers, things like that, that generally can come and say, wow, look at my taxes. Why are my taxes going up? What do I have to, you know, why? They don't understand what goes into that taxes. They also don't understand, and I've been trying to get this too. You know, I don't like to pay taxes either. I don't think anyone likes to pay taxes, right? But it's, we have to pay them. But if you look at taxes at our district compared to every other Lincoln Way feeder district, and we don't publish this enough as far as what our tax rates are compared to the surrounding districts for a Lincoln Way feeder and what we do with our taxpayer money. So I'd like to see us promote that. Now, with that said, what I don't want to see is, for some reason, District one sixty-one sends me their newsletter every, whenever they send it out, if it's every couple of months. It's on this glossy page, six pages. I'm a, I am a member of one fifty-nine, but they still send it to our house. So not quite sure, but that costs them money to put that thing together, and so I don't necessarily want to do that because I give a one-minute read and it goes right in my recycle bin. So they've wasted money. I don't want to see us take money out of the classroom for that, but if we can do it on the village's thing. But I do think we need to get better at reaching out to non-parents in the district to show like what we are doing and highlight the fact of what their tax dollars are doing. And especially the awards that this district has won over the past two years and the recognitions that we've gotten on the state level is phenomenal. And it just, it'd be nice to make sure that people outside the parents that might frequent websites and, you know, principal emails, teacher emails that highlight that, that we can get that. So I'd like to see that done. I just don't quite know how we can do it, but I like Jim's ideas of reaching out to them that way without spending a ton of money.
Eric? So just an idea, I think that's, those are great ideas. And I just spoke with the village yesterday, as a matter of fact, regarding how they might be able to help us promote the color run. And they said they do an electronic newsletter that they're going to, you know, well, they email it out too. So, oh, is that what you have pulled up? Oh, okay. So, yeah, so, yeah, it's electronic newsletter that they could, yeah, just give us a corner.
Okay. All right, good discussion. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none.
So Eric, what is the next steps? Do you propose or does the board propose with advancing these ideas or vetting them to where we can make them come alive exactly?
Open to what the board wants to do.
I think it would be a good idea to see, at least till the next meeting, to see if anyone listening, either here or online, has any feedback from that, to see if the public has anything. And then, and then continue the discussion on, with that feedback in mind, on where we can prioritize some of the time and hopefully not any real big dollars at all.
So does it, does it stay as an agenda item for next month to try to solicit feedback from the community in some way, just people listening maybe or?
I think if they want to speak up, that would be at the public communication section. I mean, I'm not opposed to keeping it on for discussion, but if there isn't additional information, then we can quickly move past that. I think it's probably a good idea to just keep it on there, and then if we don't have any further suggestions, we can move past it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of, how does it, yeah, how do we, how do we advance it? Just to first.
Sounds like we're going to sit and get some feedback potentially, and then we'll go from there and see what the feedback is.
Great. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Gom.
Okay, I believe the rest of the week before was paraprofessional recognition. They, we have administrative professionals say it's coming up next week. And then May sixth through tenth, as Ms. Fort mentioned, was going to be our teacher appreciation week. We'll do a staff, full staff appreciation recognition that week, and we'll get some participants in that. We also have some things planned throughout the, throughout the district. Just a nice chance as we get towards the end of the year to thank all of our staff for the year, for job well done. Also, as Ms. Fort mentioned, PTA is helping us out with the day of play we're looking, is bittersweet. It is bittersweet to say goodbye to a playground which has given so much joy to so many students for so long. I am looking forward though to the construction of the new Mokeena Intermediate School recess area. We'll be working with the fourth grade students over there to help design the layout of that space with areas striped for the games that they would like to see be played. Galaxy Award nominations will be closing soon, so if you have anybody that you would consider a nominee for Galaxy Award, please do so soon. That concludes my report.
Questions, Dr. Gom? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening again. In my report this month, I highlighted the professional learning that is taking place during the month of April within our schools. I provided an update to the board regarding where we are in our partnership timeline with Northwestern Center for Talent Development. This past month and upcoming next couple of weeks are really busy with our partnership. We have had the Center for Talent Development in thirty-three of our classrooms observing kindergarten through eighth grade and ELA and math. I've sent out teacher and parent surveys via email, so please, if you are listening at home as well, we'd love your feedback regarding our next steps forward in this work. We also will be having focus groups next week with teachers and students in all, in grade levels three through eight. And we will be having parent focus groups, which was part of my email to parents as well, on April thirtieth. So if anyone does need any clarification on that or what that participation looks like, they can definitely email me for more information. This evening, I do have an action item on the agenda for you regarding the adoption of the sixth through eighth grade StudySync ELA curriculum. I have no additional information to add beyond what I had shared last month as that informational item. We're really excited and hoping to be able to get started after this evening in our next steps with professional learning and purchasing materials for the teachers to have before the end of the year. I did provide some information for you regarding the work that our e-learning committee has recently completed based on parents and teacher feedback with our current e-learning plan. As I had mentioned in my report, our e-learning plan is in place for three years, and then after three years, we do need to go through a renewal process similar to what we had done together in 2021. So I have provided that draft for you. Our next steps would be to hold a public hearing at our main Board of Education meeting, if you're okay with that, in which we would present any changes to the plan, and then we would be seeking your approval to move forward with the committee's recommendation on that plan for the next three years. And then I would work with the Regional Office of Education to get that final approval. In addition, I provided to you information regarding where we are with our MTSS committees and our next steps with that before the end of the school year. And then my last piece was again highlighting the work of our second grade students tonight who did an amazing job, and we're really proud, not only of their work, but just seeing the work that all of our students have done with our new ELA curriculum in kindergarten through fifth grade. We have a lot to be proud of and a lot to celebrate with the learning and the hard work that both our students and our teachers have done this year. So hopefully, you were able to see a little glimmer of that tonight, and we thank you for your continued support in ensuring we have the resources and the instructional materials and the funds for professional development to be able to do the things that we were able to see this tonight for our students.
Just, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julia.
Please.
Sorry. Dr. Johnson, thank you for the work you did on this e-learning plan. It looks like that, you know, a good, a good effort. I could see the team grew a lot.
Yes, it did, yeah. Yes, for sure, yeah. I mean, you know, now that it's something we've done, more people are willing to like, let's come in, let's share experiences and grow from there, so.
Right, that's great. I told you, I haven't really put the fine tooth comb yet, but I will get you any questions I have in the next, you know, sooner than later.
Sure.
My only question is, when the public looks at this online, are they able to see the red that is indicative of the changes that change?
Yeah, I, when I, when we put up information for the public hearing, I will have that information up there as part of that.
Today or no?
No. It was a draft today that I provided to you as the board, as information, because we had just completed it. So I will have that up and available prior to the next, the next meeting.
Prior to the next, if any, if the public, the public will be able to read it, obviously, and will they be able to see the changes from the current to the proposed?
I can definitely leave the red if you would think that would be helpful. Okay.
I don't know. I don't think it's easier to.
Yeah, definitely, yes.
I just wanted to make a quick comment of, thank you for leading and marshaling through the advanced learners programming. I know we've had a lot of parents come in and speak about that, and I wanted to make sure that parents saw the great progress that is being made and to make sure that the surveys are filled out. And I thank you for ensuring that students are included with the focus groups.
One-minute read and goes right in my recycle bin. So they've wasted money. I don't want to see us take money out of the classroom for that, but if we can do it on the village's thing. But I do think we need to get better at reaching out to non-parents in the district to show like what we are doing and highlight the fact of what their tax dollars are doing. And especially the awards that this district has won over the past two years and the recognitions that we've gotten on the state level is phenomenal. And it just, it'd be nice to make sure that people outside the parents that might frequent websites and, you know, principal emails, teacher emails that highlight that, that we can get that. So I'd like to see that done. I just don't quite know how we can do it. But I like Jim's ideas of reaching out to them that way without spending a ton of money.
Eric, so just an idea. I think that those are great ideas. And I just spoke with the village yesterday, as a matter of fact, regarding how they might be able to help us promote the color run. And they said they do an electronic newsletter that they're gonna, you know, will they email it out too? So, oh, is that what you have pulled up? Oh, okay. So yeah, so yeah, it's electronic newsletter that they could, yeah, just give us a corner.
Okay. All right. Good discussion. Anyone else? Okay, here none.
So Eric, what is the next steps? Do you propose or does the board propose with advancing these ideas or vetting them to where we can make them come alive exactly?
Open to what the board wants to do.
I think it would be a good idea to see, at least till the next meeting, to see if anyone listening either here or online has any feedback from that, to see if the public has anything. And then, and then continue the discussion on, with that feedback in mind, on where we can prioritize some of the time. And hopefully not any real big dollars at all.
So does it, does it stay as an agenda item for next month to try to solicit feedback from, from the community in some way? Just people listening maybe or?
I think if they want to speak up, that would be at the public communication section. I mean, I'm not opposed to keeping it on for discussion, but if there isn't additional information, then we can quickly move past that. I think it's probably a good idea to just keep it on there. And then if we don't have any further suggestions, we can move past it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of, you know, how does it? Yeah, how do we, how do we advance it just to first?
And get some feedback potentially, and then we'll go from there. See what the feedback is.
Great. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Gom.
Okay, I believe the rest of the week before was paraprofessional recognition. They, we have administrative professionals say it's coming up next week. And then May 6th through 10th, as Ms. Fort mentioned, was going to be our teacher appreciation week. We'll do a staff, full staff appreciation recognition that week. And PTAs participate in that. We also have some things planned throughout the, throughout the district. Just a nice chance as we get towards the end of the year to thank all of our staff for the year for job well done. Also, as Ms. Fort mentioned, PTAs helping us out with the day of play we're looking, is bittersweet. It is bittersweet to say goodbye to a playground which has given so much joy to so many students for so long. I am looking forward though to the construction of the new Mokena Intermediate School recess area. We'll be working with the fourth grade students over there to help design the layout for that space with areas striped for the games that they would like to see be played. Galaxy Award nominations will be closing soon. So if you have anybody that you would consider a nominee for Galaxy Award, please do so soon. That concludes my report.
Questions, Dr. Gom? Okay, here none. We'll move on. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening again. In my report this month, I highlighted the professional learning that has taken place during the month of April within our schools. I provided an update to the board regarding where we are in our partnership timeline with Northwestern Center for Talent Development. This past month and upcoming next couple of weeks are really busy with our partnership. We have had the Center for Talent Development in 33 of our classrooms, observing kindergarten through eighth grade and ELA and math. I've sent out teacher and parent surveys via email. So please, if you are listening at home as well, we'd love your feedback regarding our next steps forward in this work. We also will be having focus groups next week with teachers and students in all, in grade levels three through eight. And we will be having parent focus groups, which was part of my email to parents as well, on April 30th. So if anyone does need any clarification on that or what that participation looks like, they can definitely email me for more information. This evening, I do have an action item on the agenda for you regarding the adoption of the sixth through eighth grade StudySync ELA curriculum. I have no additional information to add beyond what I had shared last month as that informational item. We're really excited and hoping to be able to get started after this evening in our next steps with professional learning and purchasing materials for the teachers to have before the end of the year. I did provide some information for you regarding the work that our e-learning committee has recently completed based on parents and teacher feedback with our current e-learning plan. As I had mentioned in my report, our e-learning plan is in place for three years. And then after three years, we do need to go through a renewal process similar to what we had done together in 2021. So I have provided that draft for you. Our next steps would be to hold a public hearing at our main Board of Education meeting, if you're okay with that, in which we would present any changes to the plan. And then we would be seeking your approval to move forward with the committee's recommendation on that plan for the next three years. And then I would work with the Regional Office of Education to get that final approval. In addition, I provided to you information regarding where we are with our MTSS committees and our next steps with that before the end of the school year. And then my last piece was again highlighting the work of our second grade students tonight who did an amazing job and we're really proud, not only of their work, but just seeing the work that all of our students have done with our new ELA curriculum in kindergarten through fifth grade. We have a lot to be proud of and a lot to celebrate with the learning and the hard work that both our students and our teachers have done this year. So hopefully you were able to see a little glimmer of that tonight. And we thank you for your continued support in ensuring we have the resources and the instructional materials and the funds for professional development to be able to do the things that we were able to see this tonight for our students.
Just, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julia.
Please.
Dr. Johnson, thank you for the work you did on this e-learning plan. It looks like that, you know, a good, a good effort. I could see the team grew a lot.
Yes, it did. Yeah, yes, for sure. Yeah, I mean, you know, now that it's something we've done, more people are willing to like, let's come in, let's share experiences and grow from there, so.
Right. That's great. I told you, I haven't really put the fine tooth comb yet, but I will get you any questions I have in the next, you know, sooner than later.
Sure.
My only question is, when the public looks at this online, are they able to see the red that is indicative of the changes that change?
Yeah, I, when I, when we put up information for the public hearing, I will have that information up there as part of that. No, it was a draft today that I provided to you as the board as information because we had just completed it. So I will have that up and available prior to the next, the next meeting.
Prior to the next, if any, if the public, the public will be able to read it, obviously, and will they be able to see the changes from the current to the proposed?
I can definitely leave the red if you would think that would be helpful. Okay.
I don't know. I think it's easier to.
Yeah, definitely. Yes.
I just wanted to make a quick comment of, thank you for, for leading and marshalling through the advanced learners programming. I know we've had a lot of parents come in and speak about that. And I wanted to make sure that parents saw the great progress that, that is being made and to make sure that the surveys are filled out. And a thank you for ensuring that students are included with the focus groups. I thought that was really great.
Yep, and that was that recommendation from Northwestern. So we appreciate, you know, their leadership in facilitating and helping us through the process as well.
Okay, any other questions, Dr. Johnson? Okay, moving then on to Mrs. Volpe. Questions for Ms. Volpe? Okay, Dr. Shaw?
Good evening. Had a few things. So we had a wellness clinic and we had our highest participation in our wellness clinic on March 19th. And so our reward for participation is we did a healthy lunch. And we had two schools tie in participation. And so we had a healthy lunch for MJ and MES to thank them for the high participation rates. And our next finance committee meeting is on Monday, May 13th. We're going to be taking a look at the amended budget. And then we will do deep dives into the transportation fund and the technology department budget. There we go. I've got some information items on tonight's agenda regarding for action next month with our food service salaries, our summer painting, the timeline for the amended budget. And then in May, we've got an amended budget. You should see that with the binding hearing in May. And then in June, amended budget hearing. So we've got some hearings coming up from Dr. Johnson and myself coming in the next couple of months. Just a reminder of some of the projects we've got going on at MJ this summer. We've got our chiller replacement here at, yeah, yay. At MES, the main entrance door replacement, phase two of the playground, electrical repairs. At MES and MIS, we're going to be doing some flooring work and painting, and then the willow crest improvement. No painting and flooring in the building with no air conditioning this summer. You'll take it, I'm sure. Okay. The action items for this month, we've got requests for the board to approve our summer helpers, six for our building and grounds department and three for the technology department. We do have an action item for the student fees with the lunch price does increase from 380 to 395 to be in compliance with the National School Lunch Program. And, and then it, we've got the MES electrical work. Just a note on the electrical work, we did start that project with an estimate at 50,000. We did expand some of the scope. I didn't put the expanded scope on my information item, but you did get it in the board questions. It was through the RFP process that was built internally. We did this process without our architects or engineers. We anticipated the cost to be about 50,000. When we expanded the scope and took a look at it, we got three bids in. Those bids are all public documents. They all came in around 150,000. It was higher than we anticipated. That money is in the FY '25 budget, was presented in the capital plan under electrical work for 100,000 budgeted for next year. The other money, we have discretionary and district projects for 300,000. We'd use the rest of that to fund that plan. And so that was, I did estimate small, or low. So that was, that bid estimate with the proposed, the initial look at 50,000 and the bids came in, multiple bids at 150. So that was, the money is in our FY '25 budget, but I did have a low estimate that I showed everybody. We also have the flooring work bid approval. So we had multiple bidders on that flooring work also. And so that was a world project. So that came in, we're asking for approval tonight on that. And everything is done through the public bid process. We have our working cash bond, the resolution for tonight's, the first step of board action with the binding hearing next month, the Bond Issue Notification Act hearing, that's binding stands for. Then we also have the one-year contract extension for our outsourced custodian. We entered into a three-year agreement in '21 through '24. And part of that contract had three single one-year extensions. We're asking for the board to approve the first one-year extension.
Okay, any questions, Dr. Johnson?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, Dr. Shaw, thank you for answering a lot of the questions I had. I think, yeah, it's important for the public to see the estimate, you know, for the electrical work at the district office. And MES originally was estimated at $50,000. And we tonight are on the docket to approve the, the lower, low bidder at 100, essentially 155,000. My, my question is, and it makes more sense, so thank you for explaining the scope change. It makes, it makes sense. And it's important to note that if we did, to your point right before the board meeting, if we did engage with the ESG consultant, that they, and they would in turn add their fee, which potentially might save us money, but would also for sure cost us money by engaging with them and their, their services for this project. My question is, do we have any time to postpone the bid one more month to see what a different variation of the work might be? Or are we confident that the scope and the price, as it stands with this bid right now, is just necessary? And there's, we're, we're just confident we're just going to move forward?
Okay, it's, it's a good question because it did come in higher than, than we expected. So a couple of things to that point. We do anticipate doing this work in June. We can't, cannot do the work while students are in session because we're, you know, turning off the power to fix some electrical lines. One of the rationales for putting it on, and, and again, I should have grabbed that scope on last month's because it has been ongoing for several months, this project. We did it in-house to put that on the information item. We are confident that everything can be done by the three different electrical companies that came in. They all walked the project with the building and grounds director. It's, it's, it's electrical work that they're putting above the ceiling and fixing pipe, that wire through. So it is improvements and fixing what's broken. Because a lot of the electrical work that's in, inside the walls and in the ducts, it's just, it's old and it failed. And so we are repairing, repairing the replacement, right? And so with three looks, we feel real confident in the dollar amount because there's not, there's not outliers. There's not three bids, one at 200,000, one at 100, and one at 50. Since all of them came in very similar, we're pretty confident in the, in the dollar amount. And the other reason is because they're sealed bids. We go through the public bidding process. So it's a sealed bid process when they're opened in a public environment. So we feel very confident in the dollar amount and in the work that we've had historically with the winning bidder. We could put it off, but two, we probably wouldn't do anything different. We know that when we receive bids from our contractors, they're usually good for 30 days. So we know we've got 30 days and we've had the bids back for maybe two weeks already. So my recommendation is to go forward with it as presented.
Okay, so I appreciate that and, and I will support that. I have another question on the Alpha project. I don't know if it makes more sense for, I'm sorry, Alpha Contract, if it makes more sense to ask the board if there's any other questions before we move on to Alpha or what?
On the electrical?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I know we received an email from someone in the community. I pulled it up, but I know that there was a question about the electrical work. Could you give a little more explanation about the expanded scope so the community can feel comfortable what that expanded scope was?
I can. So we did some preventative maintenance on the unit vents in the first grade. So when we started to look at this project, what we were looking at, we were looking at a single line that went from the maintenance room all the way through into the kitchen. So this line hits the MES office for the baseboard heat. It hits the district office for the baseboard heat. It hits this vestibule out here between the doors. There's the electrical panels, the heater panels. If you're in the winter here, it's cold in between those buildings. That's going to get fixed all the way back to an electrical panel in the kitchen. So that was the original scope. It's that line. So then we ended up doing some preventative maintenance, maintenance work on the unit vents in first grade. We did two of them. They were under, I think it was about 12,000 to do. And so we did a couple of them. And then when the electricians were out, the thought was, we should take care of all of them. Since we're doing one, let's take care of all of them. We're doing two, let's take care of them. So we added those into the scope of the electrical work. So that's what was added into the scope was the first grade unit vents and doing the preventative maintenance on them. From the original one long run to adding up into the first grade wing. You're welcome.
Okay, so the Alpha, Alpha maintenance contract. So this is a, this was a three-year contract that the district executed in 2021, up for renewal, ending on June 30th of this year.
Correct.
And what's on the table is a one-year extension with a 5% increase.
Correct.
5% of the contract price, I believe, is about $42,000. Does that seem right?
Um, maybe a little more. The contract's right over a million dollars.
Oh, I thought it was 800 and some odd.
Well, the contract is now over a million dollars. 880 or 890. It's, yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay. If it's 900,000, yeah, it's right in there.
45 to 50.
Yep.
Somewhere around there.
The numbers are included in the information memo? Like what the annual price is?
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Maybe that, yeah. Okay, so I don't have that. I'm looking at this. Um, my question is, it seems like we have potentially at least another month to, before we have to execute something because the contract doesn't end until June 30th.
Right.
So could we, during the next month, go back to Alpha and try to renegotiate to reduce the 5% escalator and maybe negotiate? And this was Eric's idea, so I don't want to steal his thunder. But I think it was a fine idea that we negotiate either a one-year term or a two-year term or some other terms to bring that price down and table the vote tonight for one more month to, before it expires. And, you know, we got that time.
So a couple of things on that one. One, the current contract that we're under says in the contract itself that this contract can be renewed for one-year time periods three times. There's no negotiating of that. It is a contract that has three one-year extensions written into the contract. So that's the contract we're under. If we tried to do a two-year deal or a three-year deal, that would be outside the scope of the current contract. Then we would be not under the contract that we're under.
Okay, so I think that was my question was, I didn't understand how we didn't have to go to bid. And I think what you're saying is we didn't have to go to bid because we're just extending it and it's the current contract.
Correct.
Whereas if we try to renegotiate, that would be mean a new contract and we would have to go to bid, which we do not have time to do in the next 30 days.
All true, all true, yeah. And the, the 5% cap, it was, three years ago, when we were in a environment of a 10-year, 2%, 2.3% CPI, we had an escalator in the contract for CPI or a cap. So we're really glad we had that language in that contract of a cap. Because if we only had CPI in that contract, we would be looking at 6.5 and 7.5 over the last two years. So with the cost of labor increases, everything increases, we feel very confident that that 5% is good for the district and it's also fair. And when we entered into this contract three years ago with Alpha, we went through a very, very robust RFP process. And that RFP process probably took four months. I think Mrs. Zalinski was on there and Mrs. Briscoe. Both of you were on that committee. So it was a very robust process. And we had maybe a half dozen different vendors bid that. And Alpha was the lowest responsible bidder. We had somebody lower than them and our current contract was a little higher than them. And then we had somebody who was, you know, kind of the gold standard. And, and Alpha has, they hired our people. They brought them in at wages that we insisted on because we wanted to make sure that we paid everybody a fair wage. And as Dr. Olinitis is walking in, one of his big concerns was having consistency in staff. So we did really require that they hire our people and hire them in at a, at a rate that we would have paid them. And we've been able to keep a lot of people. One of the biggest problems has been staff turnover. So we're finally in a place where we have some pretty good consistency in staff with Alpha. And we want to maintain that. And we've got a very good management relationship with their team also.
Okay, so that's great. I think it's very important to establish for the public that we are happy with their services and that all of those factors that you just said, I think are important for everybody to understand. Is there, this is more of a big picture question because I don't know when contracts like this expire or like, how, is there some master spreadsheet that we have that shows the contracts? spreadsheet that we have that shows the contracts and when they are expiring that is maintained or that we can share with the board? I don't know.
We do not have a master spreadsheet with different district contracts and when they expire. We do have, every year we post any contract over 25,000 and that's part of our annual financial report, our AFR. One of the mandates is that we post the list for contracts over 25,000 and that's on our website. But as far as expiration dates and when those contracts expire, we don't have a master list like that on our website.
Final question. When would you anticipate or when would be potentially a best practice scenario of when we would go out to bid again?
So at this point in time, hesitant to say what happens next year because we are really extending one year. And it's very much so performance-based. It's very much so staffing-based. As long as they maintain a certain level of responsiveness and doing everything that's in their contract and doing it to a level that makes us happy with them, we take a look in a year. When that, those extensions are over, that contract is over.
And we have to go to bid.
And we have to go to bid. And you do. And that's, that's the way that works and you have to take the lowest responsible bidder. You have to. We, if we have a lower bidder than them, the next time we go around, we're going to engage with a different company. That's the way that public bidding works.
Two years, no matter what.
Well, no, one year, no matter what, if we enter into this contract. We have the option for two more one-years. Not no matter what, they have to do their job. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I did ask a couple of questions as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just so the public knows, my questions were on, you know, why not do a three-year extension if we're happy with them? Because in my experience and all my contract negotiations, the longer term you go, the better deal you get. But being it's performance-based, there is the chance that, you know, you sign a three-year contract and all of a sudden their service level just drops down because they know they got you for three years. So understand why, you know, we're going with the three-year one extensions. And then also if you have to go to bid, as you just mentioned, we could get stuck with the provider that we don't want or like or that just because of the way the bidding process works. So, so thank you for answering those questions. And I guess that just highlights the importance too, I don't know if it was a question or comment that I had, either way you want to put it, but just the importance of, you know, the weekly principal kind of report cards that we have to have that, you know, to make sure that we can evaluate, you know, the service.
Weekly.
When you renewals and things like that.
Report cards.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Mr. Henson.
Good evening. I do have a couple items, you have an information item on my report tonight. In front of you, you did get an updated quote from Saul from Wyman's Technologies from when I submitted the report. He was able to find us better pricing. We appreciate that. As you can see, he was able to save or reduce the cost of the actual Chromebook device from $319 down to $309, also saving an extra $2 off the accidental damage protection plan and $2 off the cases, reducing the cost from about $180,300 to $174,833.10, saving us an additional $5,460. I did break it down by grade level and we're also refreshing 27 Parapro devices this year. We're continuing the four-year cycle for the first and fifth graders. So we have to purchase Chromebooks for first and fifth graders every year to keep them for four years. We sell them after four years. Continuing on with that. I also included in my reports, the Department of Innovation and Technology and Illinois Century Network, how our internet connection works and the changes in the future for the owner of the physical lines. Comcast won the bid. It was AT&amp;T. Starting July 2025, Comcast will be the owner, elder owner of the lines and their internet and there will be some equipment changes. I can give you more information about that hopefully in a year when it starts to take place. I also included some of the summer work, which we actually started here in April, you know, talking about imaging and prepping and network work. And I do have an action item for the approval of the teacher portion of the staff devices later on this evening. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Did the teachers have a chance to, you know, test out any of the laptops?
They did not. It is actually the bigger brother of the current laptop. Very similar. It's just the newer generation version. So I did talk to the Lenovo reps while I was at Brainstorm and they assured me the advances on that laptop from four years ago are, are good. So.
Light years ahead.
Yeah. Four years, four years of advancements, especially in battery life. He assured me the battery life was better, which may have been one of the bigger concerns the teacher had. So.
Yeah. It's amazing what four years does. It's like, you know, it's pretty crazy.
Yeah.
Okay, then moving on, we're gonna go, oh, sorry. Okay, first four reports. Very good notes on who went first last time. So we were gonna go with Mrs. Charlie first
Springfield, Chuck? I guess I have to be like, okay. Okay, okay. Well, I'll hold this one then. That's not awkward at all. So, no, it's okay. So then we go into Springfield. Everything will be, they go every year. It's a great trip. If it's right in with their curriculum, that's pretty awesome. We have a couple of other things going on before our next board meeting. We'll have a band concert on the 7th and then the Jazz Coffee House is on the 3rd in the Commons. If you haven't been to a jazz concert, it's really, really awesome. We have some mood lighting and everything. So feel free to come. I don't know if they're gonna have coffee. They bought a lot of coffee last time and nobody drank it. So they're a little reluctant to have coffee and it might be a jazz lemonade night for everybody. Couple other things real quick. I do need to give a nice, we talked about IAR down here and we're gonna probably, I'm sure Dave's gonna mention it too. IAR went extremely smooth at the junior high. We did it over three days. We're finishing up the last of the makeups this week. I got, the staff just jumps right in. Everything's great. Thank you to Dr. Johnson for helping with, there's a lot of setup. I don't know that anybody knows how much work goes on before the tests that, I know administrators have to do, Dr. Johnson, Mrs. Volpe, everybody getting everything set up. And I want to give a special shout out to Mr. Munch. He became like one of the go-to gurus for all of our testing things in the entire Lincoln Way area. So he just did a fantastic job and it's just gone off without a hitch. And we also, this is really the first year where we've had kids who I feel like they've been pretty excited to take the test and looking forward to it. And, you know, then when they start doing it, they're looking forward to it being over. But that's junior high kids. So that's pretty cool. We also have a couple of new people that are going to be joining, actually, one of them will be joining all three of our buildings a little bit later in the agenda. Kristen Schube will be our new general music at the elementary school and doing bands at our two schools. So that's exciting. And then we have the long-term, long-term sub for math. We have Emily Einison. Hopefully you guys will be approving a little bit later. So as we keep trying to get these jobs filled as soon as possible, get those best candidates. Soon you'll all be getting an email from me about graduation. It's only four weeks away. Isn't that crazy? Four and a half? It's on the 19th of May. It's gonna be here before you know it. I will send you the information as I have in the past about times, dates, locations, what your roles would be. It is on, just to mark it on your calendars if you don't already have it, it's May 19th at noon at Lincoln Way Central in the stadium. Pray for good weather so we can be outside. And then I was asked a question about band, about summer band. So I just wanted to address that. We have not had the opportunity to finalize these things yet, but I will tell you that band over the summer, the dates were emailed out to everybody. I have the email here. And the band in March, it would have been March 12th, it's, or the dates, and they start June 12th and they go through the 4th of July. There's a, there's a schedule that went out to everybody. At this time, we have not published any kind of charge yet because that's still up, kind of up in the air how we're gonna handle that. I did share with the Music Boosters last night that we will not be, Music Boosters will not be collecting any money for that. This is gonna be, is a school activity. We just need to discuss whether that's gonna be, if it's gonna be treated like a club, then it's a club. And we would charge the students $25 as a participation fee. And then we would use our tiered system for all other clubs to decide how much the sponsor or sponsors would get paid. So that's a discussion I need to have with Dr. Cohen to finalize that and make sure we're all on the same page with, with how that goes before we publish to the parents how that's gonna actually go. So that's, that's where we are right now. I did a little homework on that today. Just a little bit of context that prior to, we used to have clubs or camps in the summer all the time. That when I first got here, after we failed several referenda, they stopped the clubs. They said, no more clubs, or no more camps, I'm sorry, no more camps. At that time, up to that time, a parent or a student would pay a, just a fee that was created by whatever sponsor. So if it's basketball coaches or whatever, they would say this is $25 per kid. There was no really, there was no set way of they did it. So and it varied depending on the club. Like cheer, we used to have a cheer camp in the summer and they brought somebody in from the outside. So it costs more. So to pay offset for that. So when we stopped doing that, band was the only thing that kept going and Music Boosters did sponsor that. And they're the ones who set the price. I think it was about $75 and it's been that way for probably 10 years. And last year, the money was collected by the Music Boosters and the money was supposed to go to the district and we pay, we, for the last several years, the money's gone to the district. So the district could take out taxes because we didn't want to be in violation. So then, and then the district paid the sponsor for how that worked. So if we go to just a club, then that means that it would just go all through the district. So that's all my report. Thank you.
Questions, Dr. Rollinitis?
Just a comment. I have a couple of my boys that are in track and we've had a few track meets and it's really cool to see how many staff members go out and help. That, I mean, there's over 100 kids participating and seeing how many staff members come out and lend a hand is pretty cool to see, even in the rain like yesterday, including you, Dr. Rollinitis and Mr. Munch, really pitching in. And I just, I just thought it was really cool. So, thank you.
Track is our largest sport. We have a ton of kids. There are well over 100 kids. And so when we're in a triangular meet like we were last night, you're probably talking to 200 students at least out there. And I've got coaches and staff who really like it. So it's a really nice thing to see all those people out there and all the parents. There's hundreds of parents there as well. So, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rollinitis, for that clarification on summer band. I think that was very helpful and there's been some confusion. So I appreciate that background and it makes perfect sense. So thank you for that.
No problem.
Okay. Well, wishing you good weather in G C. I know you guys don't stop. So it's a lot of walking. Hopefully there's no rain.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mcatee?
Feel kind of important holding the microphone. I do. Couple things I want to, going last, I always get to kind of piggyback off of what these guys said. So going off of what Mrs. Charlie said about EL education, it is amazing what our kids have been able to do. Our fifth graders are now becoming experts at natural disasters. They do something that's called a science talk. So they have groups of five students. Each student has a different natural disaster that they became an expert in. And then they just have a conversation. They share information. They have all their notes. They have their websites. They have other, their papers. But it's a student-driven conversation where the teacher literally says, go. And they just talk. They share information. They make connections. There's one group that talked for over 20 minutes. And think about, I mean, just 20 minutes for student, a student-led conversation about natural disasters. They're making, they're asking questions. They're making connections. And it really was And it really was just a very cool thing to see. You know, these 10, 11-year-old kids just building off each other and, and, you know, asking deeper questions. It was just, it was incredible. So, EL education, thank you for bringing this to us is really a wonderful thing. You know, District, you're gonna get some incredible kids next year. IAR's done. We have, I think, three makeups left to do. The kids didn't, usually nears past, they dreaded, you know, it's a test. But, this year, the kids didn't really dread it as much as in the past. Some of them did kinda look forward to it, as Dr. Hitis said. You know, the couple of kids that missed, they came to me the next day and said, "When can I make it up?" You know, so they're excited to see, you know, we always bill it as, "This is your opportunity to show us what you know." Your opportunity to show off, you know, your skills. So, they really are looking forward to that. So, you know, we're looking forward to getting those scores whenever we get them, like three years from now. I wanna give two thank-yous. Number one, we had our first MIS drawing nights last, two weeks ago. Libby MacArthur and the PTA sponsored our drawing night. We had 65 kids come out, which is incredible. You know, we've had family drawing nights before where we'd have maybe five kids from MIS, six kids. To have 65 kids come out with, from the PTA was just incredible. They had a great time. They did some great works of arts, which leads me to my next one. Next Wednesday evening on the 24th, we're having our first MIS art fair. We're calling it Launching Imagination, rockets launching, get it? So, Launching Imagination from 6:00 to 8:00 on the 24th. Every student will have art displayed. We'll have some poetry from our fourth grade students out. We're gonna be having our band concerts, recordings going on in the gym as well. So, it'll be a great night. There's gonna be some hands-on art activities that Mrs. Dobelhoff, our teacher, is organizing. So, please come on out. Nothing's, you know, it's not scheduled. Just come out anytime you're doing 6 and 8. Walk through, see all the wonderful works of arts. So, everybody is invited and thank you to Mrs. Dobelhoff for organizing that. I just want to thank our staff. The Eclipse, in case any of you guys didn't know, happened last week. But, the Eclipse was great. You know, I want to thank our staff. They did a wonderful job, you know, instructing the kids. They did a wonderful job keeping our kids safe. We didn't have any issues with the glasses. It really, and the weather cooperated, so it really was a wonderful thing. Initially, the kids were kind of, eh, it's a cookie. But, then, when you kind of explain to them, "Well, you're not gonna see this again until you're in your mid-30s," you know, 24 years from now. So, then it kinda hit home that this is really kind of a big event. So, it was a great, a great opportunity for all of our kiddos. Band concerts. Theirs is the 7th, ours is the 8th. So, when you're done playing at the Playscape till 6 o'clock, then you can come to our band concert at 6:30. So, just come on, walk on over and enjoy our band and orchestra students. We have weather assembly coming up at the end of the month. Dr. Johnson helped us get a weather meteorologist expert coming in. Now, our students with natural disasters, they're gonna talk about other types of storms. They're gonna create a storm in the gym. I don't know how they're gonna do it, but it's gonna be pretty cool. So, that's on the 26th at 10:30. There are 26 days of school left, just so you know. And how do I know that? Because we always do an ABC countdown at the end of the year. So, if the last 26 days of school, we have a different spirit day every day, starting with that letter of the alphabet. And tomorrow's A, which means 26 days left. So, tomorrow's all about the earth. So, just in case you want to wear Earth Day clothes tomorrow. What else do I have? I think that might be all. Lots, lots of activities, as everybody said. We've got Camp Manitoko coming up for our fifth graders. We've got Robert Crown, which is now Kinder Health, coming in to talk about, you know, growth and development a little bit. But, lots of great things happening and it's gonna be a busy 26 days. Any other questions for me?
Did you all have a lot of people opt out of the IAR? Or any? Zero?
I had one.
Just curious. Thank you.
I think Mrs. Chorley had one more thing.
Yes, we don't have band concerts, but we do have recorder concerts. Those are coming up. Recorder concert is the best. I, I'm so excited for this. So, they are next Tuesday. One is at 9:45, the other is at 2 o'clock. And then, next Wednesday, we have another concert at 2 o'clock. You're all invited. It'll be in the south gym. It really, I'm so impressed and proud of these kids. So, come support your third graders.
All right, thank you. All right, next is Ms. Briscoe. Got off easy. Okay, all right. Okay, for your requests, we had three. They were filled. Next up, action requests. Approve all the previous minutes. Second, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Andreessen? Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny? Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is district bills. Mrs. Zalinski had the honor this month?
I did. And I was honored to meet the Dr. Charlotte. Please, if you can, I'm out and answering all the questions. So, I move to approve the monthly bills as presented.
Second by Jim. Any discussion?
I had a question. I apologize for not asking it before. There were P-card charges that are, were fraudulent charges. Could you get quickly, give an explanation on the, you caught them and then they were reversed? But, could you just give a quick explanation on, on those?
Sure. That was one of Mrs. Zalinski's questions from today. So, we talked about that. So, we found, we don't know how fraudulent charges end up on a credit card. Just, I mean, that's just the way credit cards and fraud work. But, they did get caught. And so, we disputed those charges, but it takes a month for the P-card to get caught up. So, the charges, the fraudulent charges and questions were disputed. We won that dispute and then they were reversed against that card and that's what you saw on this month's P-card.
Has that card been shut down?
It has.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Please call the vote. Sorry.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan? Mrs. Oost? Mrs. Tunny? Mrs. Zalinski? Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is personnel. Second, any discussion?
Yes. Now, I'm not sure procedurally how to do this, so I would ask for veteran board members to assist me. What I would like to do is make a motion to separate out items 1 through 5 and 6 through 8. So, have basically two groups of the personnel report, items 1 through 5 on one and then 6 through 8 on another one.
So, you want, yeah, so just break it up into two votes is, I think, the recommendation that kind of has. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. In order to make that motion, we need to rescind the motion that's on the floor right now to do that. Can't remember now. I have a really bad memory. I can't remember who made the motion. Anna had the first. Who did the second? Lisa did the second. All right, so you would have to rescind your...
Make a motion to rescind.
Okay. Went through eight. And you would second it?
Second.
Okay, all right, so that motion is off. So, now, now Kelly, you can make your motion. Well, I shouldn't say that. Whoever, whoever makes the motion to approve would then make the motion 1 through 5 as opposed to 1 through 8. That's, Anna just did.
Okay, I make a motion to approve Personnel Recommendations, Item 7, C1 through 5 as presented, subject to successful background check if applicable.
Okay, we have a second for that. All right, Anna, seconded, any discussion? Just voting on 1 through 5. Okay, please call the vote.
I'm sorry, I did have a question. I, I'm having trouble because we got an updated chart of the changes. So, I'm having trouble squaring the 1 through 5 on, to the, the chart that Mrs. Height provided us because she had a last-minute change that was given to her. So, I'm not sure how to resolve that if, so I can better understand...
1 through 5 are the same. We just added in somebody in the three. We have the long-term sub for math. It's still classified new hires, 1. Resignation classified as 2. Certified new hires, 3. Certified long-term sub is 4. And certified resignation is 5. Now, those 1 through 5 have not changed. We did add in Emily Inison, who's taking long-term leave, or Justin Benazzo under 7, C3.
And that's in the right font?
That is right.
Okay.
Cover, cover page.
Gotcha.
She's at the bottom.
I was like, there's a lot of names on here, but there's only five on the, listed here. So, my brain kinda just went. So, thank you for the explanation.
Okay. Please call the vote.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passed. Congratulations to all those new staff members listening. I'm sure they're listening in tally.
Yeah, right.
On, on the phone. And principals can get the good news. I'm on that phone. Okay, all right. So, that takes care of personnel 1 through 5. So, now, we gotta deal with 6, 7, and 8.
So, I would like to make a motion to table Personnel Recommendations, 5, I'm sorry, 7, 8.
6. 6.
Oh, oh, oh. 6 through 8. Is that right?
Yes.
6, yeah.
6 through 8.
Second?
And do I explain my reasons for this?
Not yet. Not yet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julie O'Hayes. Any discussion?
Yes. I just want to explain, I would like to table the Personnel Recommendations as, as stated, 1, 6 through 8. And here is why. Part of the role we have as a Board of Education is to ensure sound financial decisions are being made and do our diligence to represent the taxpayer interests of our community. Before approving administrative contracts and compensation changes, which have budgetary impact, as recommended by the superintendent, it is prudent for, for the board to have a gauge on the job performance of these district employees, which is documented in their annual performance evaluations. Every job I've ever had has included a process from my employer to evaluate my, my performance before compensation adjustment is approved. On the table tonight, we have compensation adjustments for board approval, but the Board of Education has not yet, at this point, been provided any information on the performance evaluations that were done for this school year. In addition, the board has a fiduciary obligation to ensure that the district is meeting its contractual obligations for the annual evaluations as specified in the employment contracts. One term in the employment contracts for these employees is that an annual, excuse me, evaluation is done before March 1st of each calendar, each school year. And the board at this point has not established that that has been done. So, that's part of our duty to make sure the district is performing its contractual obligations. In addition, we have an amended administrator contract on the board report for approval today that the board has not yet discussed. So, for those reasons and, and those discussions, evaluation and compensation and employee-specific private data is, those discussions happen in closed session. At this point, the board has not had those conversations. So, for that reason, I would like to table this until next month, so the board today is able to have these conversations and approve next month.
Any other discussion?
I would like to just add that I do agree with what you're saying, Kelly, when it comes to companies and such. My boss obviously gives me an evaluation every year before giving me a raise as well. But, our employee, I'm sorry, is the board, is Mark, and he did those evaluations and is recommending to us, based off of his recommendations, what we should vote on. So, I feel like we do have that information already with his recommendation. So, that's just my thought.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Sam. So, I think that that is a common thought, that the only employee that the board employs is Dr. Cohen. It is true that he is the only employee that we manage, but the Board of Education, as, as cited in the employment contracts themselves and our policy and school code, the Board of Education is the employer for all employees. And that's, that's what school code says. That's what our policy says. So, and, and that's what the contracts themselves say, is that the Board of Education is the employee and the second party of the contract is the employee, employer, excuse me, and the second party is the employee. So, he is the manager, we are the employer. And as part of our duty to the public, we are approving compensation raises that, or compensation changes that have budgetary impact. And we have a contractual obligation to ensure that the evaluations are done by March 1st of each calendar year. And as we sit today, we have not established those things as a board. So, that's the reason.
As for IASB, the local school board is required to adopt and enforce all policies necessary for the management and governance of the public schools of the district, which written policies. The board directs and empowers the superintendent to function as chief executive officer, managing day-to-day district operations. We all have the list from IASB, et cetera, that outline our roles and duties. And those are to be mindful of what those roles are. We have an employee who has followed the guidelines that we have suggested. He has performed the reviews that we have suggested that he do in a timely fashion. He has done the job we have asked him to do. And based upon that job, he has made recommendations. I am comfortable with moving along with those recommendations, as were most people a month ago. So, I understand people may wish to sit down and review other people's evaluations. That is not our job or our role. And I am comfortable moving forward with these suggestions as provided by our employee who is in charge of managing the day-to-day operations. Thank you.
So, so, the, I, I know that this is a difference of opinion, but our policies and school code and our employment contracts are very clear. We are the employer. Mark Cohen is not an authorized agent or signatory for our district. The Board of Education is. Our Policy 220 dictates the powers and the duties of the school board. And item number 3 is employing a superintendent and all other personnel, all other personnel. That's why the employment contracts have the Board of Education on them. And it is our duty to ensure taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. And, and I'm not insinuating in any way that they are not. I'm saying that part of the diligence and part of the job that we have as a school board is to check the box. And I have not, at this point, checked the box that we have done the evaluations, that they warrant the increases that are on the table tonight to approve. And that's simply all I want to do. I just want to check the box. I don't want to invade anybody's privacy. I just want to understand that I did my job and saw everything that I needed to see before I voted on the budgetary impacts recommended tonight.
We have a clause against no surprises. That wasn't really followed today by a slew of last-minute emails from people that should be following the guidelines we all put together. That is step, that is one of my concerns. This information has been around for 30 days. Wasn't fresh three weeks ago, wasn't fresh two days ago, and it sure wasn't fresh information today. Yet, we are again slowing down our work, which is not very helpful for our people that work here helping our kids. Also, board duties, superintendent district staff duties, governance, board values and beliefs, mission, vision, goal, policies, actions, that's us. Management objectives, action items, procedures, and recommend and development of action plans, not us. It's not. No one wants to be foolish with taxpayer money. Having good quality people in our district, taking care of our kids, supporting them, making a good environment for them, and in turn, helping preserve our local taxpayers' property values is important. But quite honestly, we have guidelines against no surprises. None of this information developed in the last 48 hours. It's been here for the last 30 days, and this is an attempt, again, to slow things down, and there wasn't any fresh information to really do that.
I, I... The employment contract. So I could not see any administrative until the board received the... And this was not a surprise. This has been talked about, and it was part of the questions that I asked. Per the timeline that we established, in response to getting the board packet, I responded right away. I have been very communicative. If the board does not agree, the board does not agree. I made a motion. If you disagree and you feel good about what information you have and you want to vote, that's your prerogative. I am simply saying my position and the reason for my position, and that's it.
I kind of see this, I don't know, a little different. I think this kind of quite simply can be... Mark, did you do the evaluations of the principals? That is your job, and I trust that you did your job. I appreciate that you did that. We, I don't have the day-to-day, and I trust that the evaluations, if ever needed, would support the recommendations that you made. So that, to me, is not troubling because you did what you are required to do, and we have entrusted you to do those reviews. My only apprehension is, Jim's right, we had a slew of emails, but it wasn't just internally with the folks around the table. We had some FOIA's come in that asked about not having data on the six, seven, and eight that Kelly separated out. We have that data, so I don't know if that is best to address those concerns so the public can have that comfort level, that the diligence was done. And my only other point is, has nothing to do with the wonderful people that these contracts are about. There is just one that we haven't seen the amendment to, because as I understand it, it's an amendment, and that's my only apprehension. So as far as proof needed for the evaluations and the raises, Mark has committed that he has done those, and I trust that. I just haven't seen the contract amendment in the other to, in order for us to have the dialogue that we need to, and that's my only apprehension. Thank you.
See, the amendment is in board book. It was overlooked on Friday, but it was put in.
Is it an amendment or is it a replacement?
It's a replacement contract.
And the board attorney read through?
I didn't speak with him about it Monday when he came in for bargaining. All of our administrative contracts, you have a clause towards the end that say that any agreement that's been signed supersedes any previous agreement.
That is, just so folks know, I'm personally, I'm just speaking for myself, that's my apprehension is we, the board president and the superintendent can talk to the attorney. We can't. So we haven't had that discussion to, where I can get comfortable that the contract piece of that was done, and it was done well. So there's no exposure for the school. That was my apprehension, so I appreciate the feedback.
So, Mark, you're saying, Dr. Cohen, you're saying, I apologize, that the, all of the, all of the coordinators, directors, forgive me, and... Evaluations were done before March 1st of this year?
No, I did not say that. I said they're done.
Okay.
The seven direct reports that I have are completed. I was late.
So there's, when you say seven direct reports, is that correlating to...
Four, seven, three principals.
Okay, I'm sorry. I need to check to see, are there only seven people between six and eight?
No.
There's more than seven?
The principals evaluate their system. Principals, Dr. Shaw evaluates her staff.
Okay.
It follows our org chart.
Do we have, do we have performance evaluations for all of the people that are on the vote tonight?
I will have to check. I don't read the performance evaluations that they come in, so I don't look over. Dr. Shaw evaluates a staff member, I don't read it. If Dr. Rowanitis evaluates Mr. Munch, I don't read it. Those are, those generally the performance evaluations are left up to that supervising administrator, right? And if there are any performance concerns, of course, those principals or department has to share them with me. But in general, that information remains confidential.
So, again, the reason for this is not, not because I need to know. I'm trying to establish from a district contractual responsibility perspective. We have employment contracts that say we need evaluate, performance evaluations done before March, March 1st of each school year. We are, right now, today, approving a list of multiple people on item six through eight that have these... Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 people that we're talking about. What I'm proposing, that the board table this vote on approving these contracts until we can establish in closed session that all of these performance evaluations were done per contract and get comfortable, as with the amended contract, that before we vote.
Two things, again. That's a management thing, it's not us. Kelly made a motion, there's a motion on the table in order to postpone. I recommend we call that and start moving forward one way or the other.
Okay. With that said, I have two things. Sorry. First thing, Julie, your point is, yes, Mark and I do have access to the attorney, but if you're relying on my interaction with the attorney to review any contracts, I'm stating to the public, I have not reached out to our attorney on these contracts. I have not reviewed them with him. So if you're relying on that as any kind of assurance, that has not happened. So just want to make that clear. And then second, so for the avoidance of doubt, I just want to really quickly, sorry, I know this has been a long discussion, but if we can go around the table, I just want to confirm, as Mark was not able to confirm, so that's not a slam, but if we go down this list and we say, Urban Walker, was his evaluation complete? No. Okay. Kim's punished. No. Okay, so I have end of school year. Okay. Dave is... Okay. Lincoln?
Lincoln, Dr. Shaw, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Rowanitis, Mr. McAtee, Mrs. Charlie, all of their evaluations are completed. Seventh person that would supervise or lead the director's student services is Jennifer S. Intermittent for Evaluation.
Okay. To assist the principals? Okay. All right, any other discussion?
How many, how many do, how many do we have contracts for that are not done? Mrs. Pirek? And Urban, did we say? I'm sorry.
Right, Urban, Kim.
So Day Rana and Mrs. Pirek are the ones that are not done, that...
Okay. All right, so just to clarify, a yes vote is to postpone approval until next month. A no vote is we will proceed with voting for six, seven, and eight. All clear?
Got it.
Okay. I think we're ready.
Mr. Bush?
We'll go with...
Mrs. McMillan? Mrs. Oss?
Everything in, I, and I don't want, I value the morale and of our staff and the good people of our staff, so I will vote no.
Tony? Mrs. Zelinski? Mr. Andreessen? Mrs. Briscoe?
Okay, six to one. The vote. Double digit. No, so we will, I don't want to say double digit. No, passed. So we will continue with the vote. So now we need a motion. I have moved to approve the recommendation, seven, C, six, seven, eight, as presented subject is successful, back to our chapter. Yes. With the... All right, go through that. Any discussion? Okay.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan? Mrs. Oss? Mrs. Tunny? Mrs. Zelinski? Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Okay, motion passed. Next up is consent, consent, sorry, agenda?
I move to approve consent agenda, items seven D, one through six, as presented.
Any discussion on consent? Ah, can't say it. Consent? Agenda?
Just that I know that within the slew of emails that came in within the past 48 hours, including FOIA's, with the additional information that was provided by Dr. Shaw, I'm now more comfortable, so I appreciate that. If it felt like a surprise, it was unintended, but I want to make sure that the public is also, has the information that they need as well. So I appreciate your patience.
Okay. Please call the votes.
Mrs. McMillan? Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Andreessen? Mrs. Briscoe? Yes? Mrs. Bush?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. Next up is the sixth, proceed through the LA curriculum adoption.
I move to approve the administration's recommendations to the basket, implement the six through eight, the LA curriculum, curriculum, isn't a document, program, raw field study, starting in 2024, 2025.
Jim, any discussion? You follow?
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski? Mr. Andreessen? Mrs. Briscoe? Yes. Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is the teacher laptop refresh.
I move, oh, I move to approve the purchase of 170 new teacher laptops from YNS Technologies as part of the staff device refresh at a total cost not to exceed $205,684.70.
Discussion? Please call the votes.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
I hear the matter, my friend, yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Okay. One of those new laptops, teachers. All right, next up is the resolution for the $250,000 working cash fund.
I move to approve the resolution declaring the intention to issue $250,000 working cash flow bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund and directing that notice of such intention be published in the manner provided by law.
Yes.
I just want to quickly note, if anyone missed last month's meeting, there was a great presentation on this, and again, thank the creativity for utilizing this bond.
Similar point, want to point the public to the last meeting presentation and stress that the, this is a mechanism, it's a short-term mechanism, it is not costing the district anything, and it is essentially moving money from one bucket to another so that we can utilize it, and that is it. So if you have questions, reach out to Dr. Cohen.
There is a minimal cost for a short period of time, but it's minimal cost. Yes. And just so the public understands that these funds are going to be utilized to purchase school buses that are going to save the district more interest than what we're going to pay, a lot more interest than what we're going to pay in that little short period of time for the working funds. Because if we had to do at least for usually five years, there's a lot of interest on five years. So 30 days compared to five years is a significant amount. The funds are, they're in our, they're in our budget, so it's just a way to unlock that mechanism to do. Okay, please call the votes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is the setup public BINA hearing.
I move to approve scheduling the public BINA or BINA hearing for May 15th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the district boardroom.
Question? Please call the votes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Alpha Contract Renewal.
I move that the board approve the one-year contract extension with Alpha Maintenance Company as presented.
Anna, any discussion? Please call the votes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oss?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is the destruction of our beta in closed session minutes. Yes. Okay. Motion passed. Next up is the destruction of verbatim closed session minutes.
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to destroy the verbatim field recordings of closed session. This even passed.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. This is second discussion.
Yes. Just a quick note, I want to thank the board and the administration for allowing me to listen. I found the tapes and recordings very valuable. I know, and, and Ms. Briscoe, I appreciate your time very much. I did gain a lot of value. One of the things, so the public understands is, you know, contract negotiations was a topic that was discussed at some point, so, so some of these things don't happen but once every four or five years, so it's, it's extremely good insight for me to have. So I just want to thank you again, and, yes, that's it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please, please call the vote.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan? Yes. Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony? Yes. Mrs. Zelinski? Yes. Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe? Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. Next is the items for the May 15th, 2024 agenda. Okay. We got Dr. Johnson, we got your learning plan.
I'll have an action item for home books.
Home books for students. Okay.
The board's presentation on school program plans, kind of an end year wrap up for the first call.
Okay.
It'll be the information item on the amended budget. We'll actually have the budget hearing in June. Yep. We'll have a BINA hearing next month, and you'll see the budget, but the actual technical budget hearing is, it's going to be posted for 30 days, the whole process. Yep.
Mrs. Volpe and I will also be sharing with the board the consolidated district plan that sets forth our grant work for the following school year, so we will have that as an action item as well.
Next steps, follow-up for related to discussion or interaction items. Okay. Move on to the.
I'm sorry, Eric, I'm sorry.
Nope. You go.
Just questioning, are we in?
You have something with the next step?
No. The, yes.
Follow-up interlude. Okay.
Are we, are we going to announce the, the policy committee meeting? Does this want me to?
Can, if you want.
Not for me, but.
Sorry, I didn't know if it was the appropriate time to do that. So, thank you to the, the board for agreeing to implement the policy committee, and thank you for allowing me to chair the committee. I know that it is short notice, but the first meeting will be Monday at 7:00. It won't, you know, I don't want people to think that there's going to be this long agenda where we're going to be diving in and changing policy. It's one where I, I, and I haven't spoken and shared the agenda yet with, with Eric, who is co-chair, but what we're trying to do is kind of lay the foundation in goals and expectations of the group for this first meeting, and set the calendar of what that will look like. So, if you can't attend, I am always available. Please call the district office. If you want to set up an in-person meeting, I'm happy to do it, but I, I don't want anyone to walk away from this thinking that we're springing a meeting on you and we're going to, to start changing policies. I have put together this enormous spreadsheet, because I absolutely love Excel spreadsheets, on all of our policies and where they have been and where we can, where they have been changed, getting input. The meetings will be OMA compliant, so the public is more than welcome to come in, and, and again, we haven't finalized any agenda, but as soon as that is done, no later than Friday, we will get that out, so, at 7:00 PM. And then the, the intention is to follow a structure of having the meeting on the second Monday of, of each month, and then hoping, once we get through all of the kind of prioritizing and which, which policies need to be changed, and, and have a deadline through the press changes and things of that nature, if we can scale them back to quarterly, and then ultimately, IASB suggests yearly or biannually, or twice a year, and by separating out different policies to help, so it doesn't, it doesn't seem so unwieldy. So, I look forward to, to working through this with everybody. Thank you.
I, I have a question. The second Monday, we have finance committee on the second Monday?
So, it's intentional.
Okay.
So let me clarify.
Thank you, Eric.
So, so the finance committee was monthly, it's been moved to quarterly. So the thought is that the policy committee will not be on the same night as the finance committee, that we will then, so that from scheduling standpoint, the board, except for August board meeting, is always the third Wednesday, so people can block off their calendars. So now we have two subcommittees, finance and policy committee, that people can block off the second Monday. So what's going to happen is, obviously, three months and a quarter, we'll have a finance, we'll have a policy, and there's one month extra that we can either have a second finance, we can have a second policy, or we can just stay home and enjoy your family, and not, not come to school, and do it that way. So the thought is that we will not, but alternate, so that from a scheduling standpoint, that was the thought behind doing the second Monday, so that, yeah, so there's no conflicts with finance, but that way, people can, it's just two nights that you have to, instead of having like, periodic thing, oh, it's the third Wednesday now, it's the second Thursday.
Right, right.
Fourth Friday, and it's just all over the place. So that's, that's our thought.
Thanks for the, thank you, Eric. I appreciate that.
Yes. So, and again, it's kind of brand new. Finance committee is kind of new too, we're doing it quarterly. Maybe we can make it work, maybe we can't make it work, but that, that's a thought, so. And just to clarify, it is going to be in this room here, at 7:00 PM. Okay. Anything else? Is that all for that? Okay. For the good of Mokina, almost there.
In July, the Lions Club will be having their annual firecracker dance as the one major fundraiser throughout the entire year, and they use that money to give back to our community, helping our students with vision and hearing problems, and helping support them throughout the years through various nice things, including giving food out the holidays, but primarily helping with vision and hearing. And I know as our students have needed things, people have reached out, so we can make sure that they get the right attention. So, thanks for the help with that. That's how we fund it. So come out, have a good time, and there we go.
Just one quick one, is there are volunteer opportunities through the PTA and MAF to help with the kindergarten night. Just reach out to the folks on MAF if you're unsure of who they, who those folks are. I'm happy to point you in the right direction, but volunteers would be greatly appreciated, and seeing all the kindergarteners is adorable, so it will make you day, so, thank you.
Anything else for Mokina?
I'm gonna just make one more plug, in case some people might have missed the public comment section for the color run, May 23rd, at Main Park, community event. The, as I mentioned, the village is going to get involved, the police is engaged, fire department engaged, many area businesses, we're going to have T-shirts, swag bag color, and anybody that knows any sponsors or wants to volunteer for that as well, there are postings on that, so hopefully, everybody can join.
Okay. With that, I move that Board of Education adjourned to closed session for purposes of the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students with no action after closed session. So, Anna, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mrs. McMillan? Yes. Mrs. Oost? Yes. Mrs. Tony? Yes. Mrs. Zelinski? Yes. Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe? Yes.
Yes. Okay. Motion passed. Good night, everyone. Thank you. It is 9:21, so we can do 9:31, maybe, 10 minutes? I don't know if that's.